Anybody write for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right. The call being ordered, roll call.
Mayor Westegard?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stank him?
Yes.
Okay, no public forum, we'll move on to consent agenda. Any additions or corrections?
No.
Motion to approve?
No.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stank him?
Yes.
We'll open the public hearing on the status of the funded activities for the City of Lakeview owner occupied CDVG rehabilitation program.
All right, we'll defer to you on that one, Carla.
All right, did you receive any written comments?
I received no comments.
Okay, this is the status of your CDVG housing program, which as you know you were awarded $169,000 of funds to rehabilitate four homes. We are almost to the halfway point, we have the first two homes in that program are having some punch list items done. The third home is under construction and a fourth home goes out to bid next week. We are looking at the possibility of being able to do a fifth home with some of the budget funds that are remaining. All of these funds have assisted people at 80% or below of the area needing income and they have done updates ranging from electrical updates, new sewer line, flooring, water heaters, window replacement, electrical service replacement, siding and metal wrap. So I think it's been a pretty good program. If you look at the budget page that was included in this, you see that we still have a balance of $13,547. I am waiting to hear on some funds we applied for December 15th and if that all goes, we'll add another $10,000 to $12,000 to that and go ahead with that fifth project on the north end of town. Any questions about the program?
I don't believe so.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
The things that are done look really good, Carl.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll close up, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, we'll move on to proposals for the 413 building. We have three good proposals, I think one of them has backed away.
Yeah, so we have, did have the, the three proposals and I would tell you, we received an email this morning from Megan Droste, that Megan had withdrawn her proposal. So now we have proposals from Jim and Jeanie Barnes and then from, um, from Walton, so Sharon and Hannah and then Amanda Miller. What I hope maybe can come out of this is that if, if the council can make a decision about which way you would like to go, the next steps then would be to work on a development agreement with the chosen applicants. Okay, so we'd get a development agreement in place, laying out the project, laying out timeline and, and get that all done and ready to go. So we'll do that here within the next couple of weeks so that hopefully we can get the, the agreement approved at the next council meeting and proceed through the, the transfer of the property and get things rolling.
Um, you know, I like both proposals, um, I liked all three, but the two remaining, I like both of them. To me, I guess I tried to go down and do the pros and the cons. You know, um, and to me, the, the purchase price is kind of the least of it. Now that might not be the popular opinion of the community, I don't know, but I'm more interested in what's going to be there and what kind of business that's going to bring into Lakeview. Is it going to bring in people to shop at that particular store? Is it going to increase campground attendees? That's kind of what I'm looking at. And I was concerned about the facing of the building. So I kind of liked, um, um, Walton's, the way it was described anyway, how the front of the building was going to look. So I guess for that reason and the type of business they're talking about bringing in, I, I really was enthused about that. So I guess for those two reasons, I'm supporting the Walton project.
I, I agree, I, I think it'd be a different business for the main street of Lakeview. It's something that, you know, I think people are kind of looking for someplace to go to look things over and give them that kind of thing. I, I think that'd be a very good asset to our main street.
Do we have a motion to accept that proposal?
I'll second.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Thomas?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stank him?
Yes.
Congratulations, we're still working on you guys.
Thank you guys.
It's okay, I was gonna vote with them too. I vote them.
We are, we are excited to have all of you down there, we really are.
I just think it feels like Shark Tank in here right now. For those reasons.
Scott will get an agreement put together.
My heart's beating.
Yeah, I will.
He'll get an agreement put together.
So here over the next few days, I'll get something rolling and we'll get together and, and start to discuss that.
I would like to see some kind of a sketch of what the front of the building is going to look at, that's really important to me. It doesn't have to be drawn by an architect.
I, I would still like to be able to find a place for your business also though.
Yeah.
The reason we put them pickle paints in there is because there's so much sunlight. And when we had the building years ago, they would not let us put an onion on that.
But we're all our favorite bodies now.
Maybe it was too far out or, but with the bank there, you might want to make sure that people wouldn't turn into it. I'm just, suggestion.
Okay, we'll move on, we need to pay for the landing on East Shores water project.
Yeah, so I would tell you that the, the water system is installed there. The city had entered into a development agreement with Bob Carroll and as part of that development agreement, the city would pay for the installation of the water system. And the, the price of the water system is stipulated in the development agreement. Uh, this actually comes in a few hundred dollars under that stipulated price. It's $880 less, so total price here, eighty, excuse me, $96,872 and it's recommended for approval.
Do we have a motion to make that payment?
I'll make it, or I'll second.
I'll second, or did you?
Yeah, we take it.
Roll call.
Okay, Moller?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stank him?
Yes.
Okay, we have to authorize payment for the retainage to Caliber.
Yeah, this, it may be a too strong discussion here on, on Caliber. And the, the first thing is, is the payment of this retainage per that settlement agreement. Uh, we had five days then to, to pay the retainage after they mobilized into town. And today is, is day number five. The, uh, retainage is $16,312.78 and, uh, that's recommended for payment.
We have that motion to pay the retainage.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Thomas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Stank him?
Well.
Oh.
Okay, motion period.
Yes.
Take a look at the, uh, other side of, of that settlement agreement though. As they got in, in here and started to tear into the, the streets. Remember that the, the settlement agreement had said that they would replace nine, uh, high priority cracked panels and, and the 17 panels over the storms who were trenched up by the school. They would cut half of the panels, remove, remove the cracked half and redo the rest. So, and they have done that. And then what they did is take, would take, uh, they take out six inches of the sub, sub base and, uh, took out six inches, then they recompact the next six inches. And, uh, that has been done and then, and then they take tests off of, of that sub base. Um, a couple of the tests were on Fifth Street, one passed, one didn't. Uh, we then moved up to, to Seventh Street where, uh, they took five or six tests up there and only one passed. Boy, they, they would just go with, with their probe and they, you know, they could just stick the thing in there, you know, a foot into the, into the ground. And it was, it was, it seemed more like mud more than anything else.
So why is the compaction different now than it was at the time?
I don't know that it is. I mean, they didn't, they didn't, they never did this type of testing when we did the project originally. They just did that roll testing before about rolling a filled dump truck over it and looking for displacement.
So how much does this bill cost?
So, two, two things, well, really three things. First thing is, uh, we're utilizing, uh, Brian Mast, Mast Bergen from, from DGR Engineering. And Brian had given us a second opinion on the project even before we started the replacement. So we're using him, he's, he was here during, during the testing, he's seen all of the sites then after they exposed. So the first thing that, that he would, would recommend is that the settlement originally said use crushed concrete and that he would recommend and CTS, the set, the testing folks recommend also that you would not use crushed concrete. You'd use limestone, limestone inch, inch or smaller with fines and, and it really packs in there really tight that way. And crushed concrete would have some voids, which would allow for some water issues. So, um, they, that's the first thing is they recommend limestone instead of crushed concrete. Then you get into the, the other changes. And the changes though, really does implement the, um, does implement the settlement agreement the way that it's written. Where it said, if you, if you get down there and you do the testing and you find out that it fails, these things happen. And this, that's what's happened is, is that it's an additional six inches of, of sub base coming out to be replaced with an additional six inches of rock. Okay, there is one really exceptionally bad area up on Seventh Street and think of it maybe up front of Tony Boss's house, that area. It, it is really significantly poor there. And what would, uh, what would happen there is they'd take out, um, another, another 12 inches, another six, excuse me, six plus another six and taking out the 12 inches and replace it with, with the additional rock that way. Okay, replace it with six inches of, of two inch rock, get that all compacted in and then they put, put an additional six inches of one inch rock on top of that. And then on top of that, they're pouring the concrete.
So the, so the compaction test that we did initially were not viable evidence of compaction?
They didn't, they didn't do, uh, what we're doing now as far as compaction.
Right, and that was because it wasn't written in the original contract because of the engineering?
That was the argument. Uh, the engineers say it was via the suitors, the contract said it wasn't. That was what the lawsuit was about.
Right.
And, uh, my mind is that they didn't do it and that the engineers didn't follow the, open their own suitors, their own contract.
So where does that leave us now with MRR? We have any recourse with MRR?
Well, they, they settled, they paid in the amount towards this, this construction, the $30,000.
And that's it? I mean, that's kind of what we have to live with now?
Right, because we basically signed off on the project with their recommendation.
With the recommendation that they thought that the compaction was good. I remember that. I remember he said that by now it is compacted.
There's, like Scott said, it's mud under there.
Yeah.
He can step on it, it kind of squishes.
But wasn't that what he said? Did he say that after all this time, he would be surprised?
He said, I'm gonna pack them up, finish them up.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, they've done a ton of packaging on that one.
Yes, Whitey, that's what it was, it blew us off.
I mean, we're gonna have, we're gonna all just have problems with that because it, we're doing it half and ask, if you ask me, because like I said, it's a pound, we're doing it on the pounds, we're not, it's gonna be paid for a lot of years, so I, you know, that, that ground or that, it's mushy, I know we had some rain a couple of days, but my God, it's just, uh, it's not gonna settle any different, I think you're gonna continue to have problems. And we're, we're just done with it, so.
He indicated that the rest of the street, it's not cracked, probably has the same sponge to it anyway, so we're only fixing those that are exposed.
Well, it's, well, we'll see, like I said, within the last three more years, we see changes on it, we're gonna continue to, I guess. They come up with the cost, like, oh, they come up with the cost, do they give us an itemized, you know, what, stop costs? Is this a guess too?
No, so there, there is a, an itemized, um, change order. And, um, this engineer from DGR, Brian, had reviewed that estimate and as you look at, at these cost estimates there and they're struck out and other numbers written to it, that's because they did work them all around the price a little bit so that the price had, had come down. You know, at least a few hundred dollars on a couple, on a couple of the options.
Really? Oh, excuse me, Scott.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Whitey, what's going on now is, uh, we have DGR engineer and this is what they, this is, he's in charge of these types of projects and he has been working with us throughout the lawsuits. And then in addition, the certified testing service people have a lot of experience with this type of project. And, uh, they both had the same recommendation, DGR and CTS, that we take these steps to ameliate the, uh, the water sort of pooling under there. So it's, it's getting, it's getting engineered retroactively the best we can with what we've got to deal with.
So, I mean,
the other, the other thing, Whitey, is,
if it's a water problem, problem,
I didn't.
to get the sound off and put it down, is there a level of that problem? Or, or are we just, I, I guess I've had a loss there.
Well, there's, there's two steps, uh, being proposed to remediate the water wherever it's coming from. And the first is with this limestone sub base versus, uh, crushed concrete. Crushed concrete will, will not compact as much as limestone will and the limestone that they're using has fines in it. So the water won't be able to as easily permeate and collect in the limestone. So that's why, the reason, that's the reason for that switch. The other option being discussed that's, an alternate to the change order would be to put the sub drain in. And our engineer, the DGR engineer, thought that that was a relatively simple process since the storm sewer runs right down the middle of that street to tap into that. And the CTS, uh, owner said that sub drain would take care of water both coming up from the low ground surface or ground level and also, uh, take care of some of the surface water that's coming in through cracks or intakes on the street.
And that's the $906?
Yeah.
Well, that's relatively cheap.
And those, those are numbers where our engineer helped with the calculations. CTS put the recommendations in about the drain and, so that's more or less the tile underneath in that where they dug it up. Yeah, that's the, that's the best way to say it.
This, this drain though is only in one spot too and it's in that real bad spot there again in front of Tony Boss's house. Okay, that, that's the only place though where we would run one tile.
Okay.
So it's like $13,000.
It's, uh, you have 13,500.
Yeah, he's, he hit that list. We're gonna have to approve or disapprove of this.
Yeah, there.
Do they anticipate any other trouble spots?
Well, I just, um, you know, Whitey, the answer is no, because we're only removing so many. But there's three more panels to remove, be removed on the south side of that really wet spot there like they're described by Tony Boss's house. Okay, there's three more that'll be removed on the south side. The quantities are already incorporated into this to do the, uh, the big fix, the 12 inch fix on that.
So these figures here are to do the, what we haven't even dug up yet?
Yeah.
Supposed to do it all.
The south side of the street had a shade on it, so the ground was frozen, they couldn't, they didn't want to tear into it.
And so then will Caliber do this?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's the golden egg in this thing is any other contractor that pulls one of those panels, you probably wouldn't even get a bid out of them.
So this money that we're, we're talking about here is gonna go to Caliber?
Yes.
And then we're gonna owe this other engineer some money?
It's a lose-lose deal.
It is. Yeah, who knows?
Kind of thick as that cement was up there, you wouldn't think it'd ever crack. My God, that, you know, I never seen cement that, we used to run cattle and,
Yeah.
uh, grinders and, uh, just motors and stuff on, all the time on forage and cement, we never had that kind of mouse, you know?
So would someone like to make a motion to have approved the change order? Whitey, I'm not gonna ask you.
I guess you don't have no choice, I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
There needs to be a first.
Yeah.
Reese?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Stank him?
No.
Okay, we'll fix it.
Bill, is that, I guess this is after the fact, but is, is that what you thought was the best fix? I guess I was gonna ask for your input earlier, but.
I asked him the question, is the rest of the road gonna be like this?
Yeah. Yeah.
And we don't know.
You don't wanna know that answer?
Probably it is. I wasn't gonna bring that up.
Yeah.
Everything under the cement's probably spongy.
But don't you think that would have cracked though that long and not like that tile or that sewer line? If it was going to?
I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, we're gonna fix it.
So this is for, uh, this is for the $12,602, but that doesn't include the $906?
I had it down to be 13, with the $906, it's 13, 508?
508?
That is the change order with that on there. Okay, library project. The motion for final voting number 10.
Yeah, that was just a little flooring preparation in the existing part of the building.
So, no.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stank him?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion for the final payment.
Yep, so this would be just paying the retainage then to, uh, to line in construction, $16,163.45 and the project is done and looking good.
I'll make it.
Is that motion?
Second?
Okay, roll call.
Okay, Stank him? Reese?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Okay.
He was lovely working with the library crew.
He, he did well.
Excellent.
Yeah.
They've proven their.
You appreciate contractors like that.
Yeah, we've had really good luck with them, we won't forget.
I'll pass him on, just do him right.
Does he do street work?
Yeah. How about engineer?
Yeah. Okay, resolution 2053, a resolution hiring a camp president manager. And the committee has a recommendation?
Yep, the, Whitey and I were on the committee, um, we interviewed, um, we had three, four interviews. Um, three one day and one the other. You know, actually, they, everyone brought something to the table, um, you know, um, obviously one was very experienced. I guess to me, it boiled down to who was gonna bring some new stuff to the table and who was gonna, um, raise the level of customer service that we have down there up and also provide things that are gonna keep attracting people to the campground because obviously this year, our revenue down there was up. But, you know, some of that is, is due to COVID, you know, because people aren't traveling other places. But, so anyway, we just wanna maintain that and keep going up and, and, um, at the end of the night, I was the most impressed with Sandy Beckman's ideas. She had a lot of new ideas for events down there and things that could draw campers in and, um, she had a wealth of ideas. So, um, and surprisingly enough, Whitey and I were both in agreement by the end. So we're recommending Sandy Beckman for the position.
And one of the things also, like, like lady said about bring new ideas, uh, you know, once you, again, I don't have to tell you guys that, we spent a lot of money down there to, to have a first class operation. So I think with Sandy coming on board, I would keep, just like Vicki said, there's also good ideas. She seemed excited about it and looking forward to new ideas, you know, she got here to meet that first year a little bit, probably won't be as much. But I, I think in the long run, you'll see a big difference out there and I think she has some excellent ideas that I think is important and that we continue to move forward.
Was that a second, Whitey?
Yeah, that was.
I thought it was.
Yeah, that was, I wasn't very sure, I didn't know what it said.
You, you, you have made a motion?
Roll call.
Okay, Thomas?
Yes.
Stank him?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Congratulations.
I do wanna, yeah, congratulations Sandy, we're glad to have you on board. And I, I do really wanna publicly thank Ruth Green, she's going to transition Sandy into this role. So, um, it'll be important this year to, um, Sandy has a lot to learn and Ruth has a lot to teach. So it'll all be fine, it'll all be fine, they'll do well together, so I'm gonna thank Ruth.
And Sandy wanted to make sure we're black and white on the Black Hawk recreation rentals.
Yeah, um, so I guess what we, um, why I'm here is, uh, to see if it's okay if we add the bicycles to the rentals, what it's come down to basically for us. If we put all of our expenses and everything together, the insurance, pay and the labor, um, we have to have more rentals, more things to offer and more things to rent. Um, so we're crossing our fingers because we're just pouring everything into this that, um, by adding the bicycles, the kayaks, the, um, paddle boards, the paddle boat, um, we're even looking at a tandem bike for on the water. We've had a tandem kayak already, I mean, um, we just need to have the, the, um, equipment rented out to cover all of our bills. Versus where we were gonna just start with the kayaks and the, um, paddle boards, there's just not enough income to do it. So we have to step up our game here. So.
Well, we had a proposal a year ago, somebody wanted to put bikes rentals down there, so this would fit in well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, just to refresh, we already approved this.
Yeah.
So it's just amending the agreement.
The lease agreement's on page 21 of the packet. Just that, uh, it does specifically state in there, canoes, kayaks, other non-motorized boats may be rented and associated goods may be sold. And we just look to amend that definition of, of rentable items to include bicycles also.
I'll make a motion that we, um, adjust the lease agreement.
And I'll second.
Roll call.
Thomas?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Stank him?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna enter in the closed session.
Okay, I, I forgot to put the dark, uh, clerking report on there, I guess, but I do have a few things.
Okay, we'll do that.
Of having a meeting with the, with the fire department and the, and the township trustees on two weeks from. Having a meeting with the fire department and the township trustees on two weeks from today, Monday, November thirtieth, we'll plan on that. So, seven o'clock at the fire station.
You do know that the new COVID stuff will be in effect?
Uh, it happens.
It's fifteen people to an indoor facility, masks are required. So I don't know if you want the whole council there, if you, how you want to adjust that. You might want to talk to Jim.
Or you can just have it over at Speaker Park over there, and you all just wrap up. I'd be a little too... Flown it out there.
One color for yes and one for no.
We may set this up with just a few people here or whatever and do a large Zoom meeting then too, so...
I don't know, I just, she just announced it tonight, so...
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
But I think it's...
And I even watched that, I didn't think about that.
Yeah, I think it's in effect until December tenth.
Yes, yeah. The Camp Crescent project, maybe the contractor will show up this week, so he has, Ten Point has talked about doing that.
It's supposed to be warmer for a little...
Yeah, it actually could be fine if it can be done.
So, do we, we don't have anything back yet on the other that we will have, going to have Ten Point look at? They don't have time, right, to do the Fifth Street or the West Street thing?
Well, let's talk about that now, because I do have a proposal on that. So what Vicki was talking about was two smaller curb and gutter replacement projects that can help address a couple of areas where we get a lot of standing water and hopefully avoid a big ice rink during the winter time. Because one of them is really right out in front of Ruth Green's house on West Street, and then one of them is at Rick Nelson's house. Okay? Richie Allen is available to do this, and they could actually start tomorrow. Be about three thousand dollars for each site, which is a little premium, but I guess I do plan that we're going to follow through and do that, unless anybody has any concerns.
So did he determine that the flow was going to go?
Yeah, so he, and he shot that in both areas.
Okay.
Not much, it's pretty flat, but it does, like in your case, it flows to the south.
Okay. And those, like, the one, the one closest to Ruth Green where it's going to flow to is hooked up, isn't there four of them, Bill? Didn't you guys check that?
At the intersection there, at Sixth Street.
Yeah.
There's one there, and then one at Fifth.
But that one closest to the park there, that, doesn't that run uphill though? After the water runs uphill there? Yeah.
It does, right there at the, where the new cement is.
Yeah.
Thirty years ago.
Yeah. I mean, I'm always...
Nothing would be about that, Gary.
No, when we come through there with the bus.
It's always run at that corner.
Yeah.
Phil started my life in Washington.
Yeah, I guess I would make a motion that we go ahead and hire him to get that.
We can't do that.
Well, we can't do that because it's not on the agenda.
I am going to go ahead and plan on doing it. Included in here a copy of a proposed church sign for the community. And you would just see that Gary Cruz is advocating that, to get us to do some work with the DOT about placement on the highway. But, and he's working with the churches about how they may fund that. He has mentioned questioning whether the city would fund that, fund a portion of that, and I want to make sure that it can happen before that question even comes to you. Concern, I'd be a little concerned about that with funding a church sign.
Church and state?
When you see these at entrances to communities all the time, who funds them? I guess I always figured it was the DOT.
Churches and community organizations.
Well, the DOT doesn't fund any of them.
They don't pay nothing.
Nope, you just got to meet their requirements, and they'll put it up for you on the primary highways.
And what is the cost of it?
Eight hundred and some dollars for four of them.
Have you talked to the churches?
He was getting around, and I know that a couple of them have had discussions on that already. WQI grants, Water Quality Improvement Grant, we do on December fourth, and Ethan, the new Black Hawk Lake Water shit guy, has made some inquiries about whether we would like to take a look at that. First of all, it sneaks up here pretty quick, so I don't know that we're going to get good applications together, but he would, he's got a couple of projects in mind, and one of them deals with some drainage out there around Brandon Putin's new house. And Brandon had shown some interest in a rain garden or bio retention cell in the ditch. So, I am going to get together with Ethan and have these discussions on that, and we'll see where it goes. And if anybody has any other small green infrastructure projects that you'd like for us to take a look at, let me know. And, yeah, all the COVID nineteen stuff, but the new regulations then for group size being limited to fifteen inside, and then also that a mask would be required when you're inside anywhere for more than fifteen minutes. As we think about, especially about City Hall, we hadn't given a whole lot of thought about what the implications would be. But we've had some discussion about whether we would, just go back to where we were in March, which was limit access to City Hall, just to the one door to the south, encourage folks to interact with us in ways other than in person, which is mainly like using the drop box to pay bills and that type of stuff. But it didn't close City Hall. People could still come in and we could still interact. And have a recommendation of masks, I suppose.
Put a sign up front, please wear a mask.
Well, they put them on the doors most anymore.
I think this one is a little tougher. She's saying that you're within, if you're longer than fifteen minutes, you're going to have to...
That's true, yeah.
Even if you're six foot apart.
And I think it starts tonight, right?
Twelve o'clock, yeah. We're already with the bus, you know, everybody's, it's working pretty good most of the time. Kids have gotten, in the bus areas, we've been doing it almost since school, because we wore a mask every day.
But they're still a bit sick?
Not really.
Oh, I thought there was only kids out of school.
Well, yeah, but most of them are because they was in contact with somebody not actually sick. They don't actually have the COVID. They actually are, what do they call it?
Exposed.
Exposed. Is their main reason.
Hopefully helps.
Yeah.
Is that our administrative report?
Other than I think I might plan to take the day off on Wednesday when it's nice and finish up my outside yard.
Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call. Thanks for coming, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
No, I'm going to sit down here on the table.
Thank you. And Tom? We're voting.